I'll order the Marshall City Council regular beating for October 20th, 2025. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Woltersberger.
Here.
Member Cheney Huggett.
Here.
Member Gates.
Member Hackworth.
Here.
Member Skibby.
Here.
Member Traver. And Member Underhill. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I would ask council to rise for the invocation with Nick Walker and Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. Would you join me in prayer? Father God, thank you that we have this opportunity to gather together this evening. As representatives of the city of Marshall, I pray for each of these individuals who stand before us that you would fill them with your wisdom, with your guidance, with your words tonight as they discuss, as they make decisions for the city. Lord, would this be decisions that are honoring to you? We just pray over their conversation tonight that this would be a city that desires to live for you, to know you more. And we just trust that tonight will be a night of fruitful conversation. Or we are just entrusting it to you. And so, thank you for this opportunity we have to be here together tonight. It's in your wonderful name we pray. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance is applied on the United States of America and the U.S. just saying it's one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nick. That brings us to approval of agenda. We have number six, public comment on agenda items, number seven is consent agenda. We have a public hearing tonight. Pardon me. We have under reports and recommendations, adjustment to EV charging rate for city-owned charging stations, residential support Michigan Avenue multi-use path. And then there are 13 appointments and elections. We have a number of reappointments for Brooks Nature Advisory, Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board, Airport Board, South Neighborhood Improvement Authority, Parks and Rec and Cemetery. That's followed by public comment on non-agenda items, council and manager communications and an adjournment. And I would seek a motion regarding the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and support. Voice votes, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Brings us to public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address agenda item topics. Public hearing items should be addressed during the public hearing portion, item 10 of the meeting agenda. Non-agenda items shall be addressed during the public comment on agenda items, item 14, portion of the meeting agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address council this evening on agenda items? Yes, sir.
Regis Glingler, 348 Butler Court in Marshall. I just wanted to bring up one thing about the Michigan Avenue multi-use path. I think it's a good idea, but the way to cross is I-69. They have it going into the median between the double diamonds and then going off again. I think that's going to be quite dangerous. I hope that the city will ask MDOT to emphasize protection for bicyclists and people in that median section because it wouldn't be hard for a car to come over that and hit them. So if they put posts or guardrails or something, it would at least add some safety to people trying to cross there because it's going to be a very busy intersection. It's too bad they didn't want to stay to one side, but if they're bent on that alternate, then it's got to have something to protect people because it's going to be very dangerous, very busy. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else wishing to address council this evening on agenda items?
Barry Wayne Adams, 6.2 West Green Street. Again, I object to the minutes which do not record the substance of the comments made by the citizens, the taxpayers, the people you work for. And it again shows that we have a city government that is essentially unresponsive to the concerns of the people. A perfect example of that is what went on at the last meeting where right at the end or right at the beginning was tacked on an agenda item which gave people in the city no opportunity to to get notice about it. And then proceed to go into closed session. Again, maintaining secrecy as to the operations of government, which the citizens and the taxpayers are entitled to know. since it looks like from the, in spite of the attempts at secrecy, that the city is not going to prevail. The city inmate is not going to prevail. And a settlement offer was tendered. You're not going to trial. I know you're not going to trial on this. But here's your opportunity to make good. You made a mistake. And it was a very large mistake, you know, $1.7 billion mistake. But you tried to slide it through illegally, got caught. And now you can make it good. The majority of the people in the town, in spite of all the Facebook gaslighting, the majority of the people in the town, which we see every Wednesday and Saturday, verifying by their responses as we're down at the phone protest. The people do not want that factory over there. And the more people find out about what a boondoggle, what a hoax, the whole EV green nonsense is, it's actually more polluting. It's actually a threat to the public health and safety. So do we want to have a factory over there? Well, even the head of Ford came out starting to talk about repurposing. So that could be a good thing, but don't need that lithium around here.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Yes, sir.
My name's Phil Mayder. I'm with 126 West Prospect Street in Marshall here. First of all, I read through the health and sanitation proposal.
The health and sanitation is a public hearing this evening? If you want to hold your comments until the
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was first before the
That's all right.
Let me give you something for the public hearing.
The public hearing will be item number 10A. And this is just comments on the rest of the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. No problem. Anyone else wishing to address city council this evening on agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Item 7A, we actually have an amendment. City council minutes work session for October 6, 2025, regular session for October 6, 25. And the amendment is our closed session for October 6, 2025. 70 is city bills purchases on October 3, 2025 of $31,140.54. Purchases on October 10, 2025 of $870,385.85. And then our September power purchase of $919,673.37 for a total of $1,821,788.76. And we have our special event request for the Give Smore Shuffle and special event request for the Christmas Parade 2025. Seek a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
The motion is supported. Mr. Roll call vote, please.
Member Cheney Huggett, yes. Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
And Mayor Woltersberger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That does move us to item 10A, our public hearing for Chapter 92 Health and Sanitation nuisances ordinance update. Chief Lankard present before the Yeah, yes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, back again presenting the changes to Chapter 92 Health and Sanitation nuisances ordinance. As I presented last time, I'm just going to do a overview of what I presented last time. So over the last year, from time to time, you know, the police department and city staff, we're, you know, we're continuously trying to improve our services and improve the ordinances and update them as, you know, we find, I guess, issues with them or just things that need to be updated. One of the things that came up over the last year was Chapter 92 with health and safety nuisance, specifically some of the grass issues. So that and just to make sure, we did a kind of looked at the whole thing, right? So once you look at one issue, you're like, well, we have this opened up. Let's look at the whole thing and see what needs to be updated. So we did a deep dive into the ordinance, looked at other communities, probably I'm going to guess around a dozen different ordinances that we looked at just to see what the best practices were to kind of do an assessment. So with that, we identified a couple of changes. List of changes that we had mainly starting off with the definitions and I'll kind of give you a summary of what those were. So it started off with mainly definitions, looking at updating and expanding our litter and junk definition because those were pretty broad. So we got a little more specific with that. We updated the definition of exterior to include porches, decks, balconies and landings. Other, other communities have, have addressed those things. So we addressed that. Noxious weeds definition, we looked at that and updated that as well. We looked at what other definitions. We took the same definition that we had, but we also added and kind of expanded that to include the State Department of Agriculture and the U.S. Department of Agriculture definitions of noxious weeds, kind of adopt those. We updated the grass and weeds undergrowth and the eight inch exception, just kind of the definition of that. And then went into undeveloped and developed properties and how we would handle the kind of defining those as in residential parcels and parcels that are continuous residential properties, requirement to mow those at the, at the current residential stipulations, which is eight inches, which is what we have. And then to open it up a little bit for undeveloped parcels that are not the current practices I discussed last time, the current process we had, but was not formalized was we were having them mow the first 20 feet of the property in front of the property and around the property. This was just formalizing that because we don't have a formal process. So we did add that as well. We also looked at a no mow may exception. So we added that in there as well to allow for city council on an annual basis to make an exception for no mow may. So we'd have to do that no later than, each year we'd have to do that no later than March 31st. We also updated the definition of property to include the adjacent public right of way just so there was no, I guess, misunderstanding that you were also required to maintain that republic right of way that's in front of your property. We also updated the nuisance definition to kind of meet the best practices. We also added a annual publication of abatement. So we, we didn't have anything, most communities we found had this annual addition that you needed. And so we also added that, that we have to have a publication that says, hey, annually we have to, we have to put that publication out and a notice that says you have to mow. And these are, this is the ordinance. So it just makes sense that, that community notified the community. So we added that. And then we looked at our written notice of abatement requirements. They were like 15 days, which, and looking at other communities was was a really long time to do it efficiently because once you get the notice, then you have 15 days and looking at mowing and abating these properties. It just wasn't, wasn't effective to get that done. So we reduced that to five days instead of 15. And then the abatement right to appeal response timeframe did the same thing. It was 10 days. We reduced that to five days. And I will say that we have not, abatement is not something that we usually use to mow lawns. Usually we get compliance with, with owners and typically if we ever have to abate a property, it's typically a property that is in a trust or we can't notify, we haven't been able to make contact with those, those people. So a rightful owner. And then the right to appeal process, we have a right to appeals process in the, in the ordinance. We looked at that, changing that up a little bit to, we're going to use the court process, which is a better process than the zoning board of appeals to do any type of due process, if that makes sense. And then lastly, there was a conciliation conference that was written into the ordinance. We ended up amending or taking that out of the ordinance just because we've never used it in the 20 some years that I've been here. We haven't, we've never used that. Typically, it's an informal process where we work with the owners. So that's basically the summary of the ordinance and just here for the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, we'll start the, we'll open the public hearing and we'll come back with any questions.
Okay.
With that, I will open the public hearing for Chapter 92 Health and Sanitation nuisances ordinance update. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council on the public hearing?
Thank you. My name is Todd Bogarelli. I live at 320 Butler Court. And I might be misunderstanding this, but if I'm not, this is why I'm here today. And the discussion of the last meeting on the ordinance of Chapter 92 Health and Sanitation, it seemed to have been implied, implied that if there were semi-enclosed or open porches and decks and things of that nature adjacent to somebody's property that, and there was overflowing trash and stuff like that, that the police would be entering those areas and notifying the homeowner. I have gone, I walk this town all the time and like taking walks around here. And I have noticed that there is a problem with that. But I don't think amending this ordinance and having the police deal with it is the right way because I'm kind of afraid of escalation, either on the part of the homeowner or on the part of the police. And it's of course would be unintended, but you know, that, that could escalate a situation that doesn't really need to be escalated. And it potentially puts everybody on whatever street is being investigated in danger, not just that house or that officer or the homeowner of that property. I just don't think that this would be an appropriate use of our police resources when it comes to trash enforcement. And if that's the case, if that's how it's going to be done with the police entering those properties, I would urge city council to vote against this amending of Chapter 2, of Chapter 92 of the Health Sanitation Ordinance. And I thank council for their time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address council on the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Back again? Phil Mayder from 126 West Prospect Street. I looked through the ordinance and at Chapter 92 and I find nothing wrong with it. Completely approve of it. The only question I had was the right to appeal. They've gone from 10 days to five days. Has there been any process made so that if there's a holiday weekend and they get a citation on Friday, they get more than five days or they get more than two days to actually file an appeal?
It just, we don't do, it's not a question and answer session, sir. We'll hear your concerns and then we'll
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I didn't see that in there. I didn't see for that condition where if there was a situation where it's a holiday weekend and they were issued a citation on Friday that they had a chance to still process a application for, before it expires on Tuesday. Oh, okay. That's the only thing I found wrong with it. So I don't know. I have another question, but it doesn't relate to this, so I should wait for that.
Yeah, for the non-agenda. Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on the public hearing?
Barry Wayne Adams again, 6.2 West Green Street. This updating is more precisely called usurpational encroachment on property rights. There's the Fourth Amendment, there's Article 1, Section 11 of the Michigan Constitution. We have property rights, they're rights, not privileges. When the government starts telling us how we can have our stuff, it's no longer a right. And the imprecise use of the term nuisance when things are actually more an aesthetic annoyance more than anything else is problematic in trying to uphold personal rights. Y'all took an oath of office to uphold the constitution. We have the right to life, liberty and property, the big three. When you start telling us how we can have our property, you've changed it into a privilege. We're not supposed to be having privileges. You're supposed to be upholding our rights. And to be accurate, a noxious weed is a non-native plant that has the potential of catastrophically displacing native species. And every native plant, every native plant in Michigan is protected by the laws of Michigan. Now, I went through this stuff with the city before. They did not prevail. And Judge Durham was able to understand one basic principle, that the state of nature is protected by the national trust. Think about those words. When you start telling us that we have to live our lives like our houses and property has to look like a magazine cover or something, that's way out of line. And you shouldn't let that kind of behavioral conditioning overcome your duty to uphold our rights. Property is especially precious. To not be able to have property is the condition of a slave. And telling us how we have to maintain our property, that's an indicator of slavery also. So are you going to be upholding rights or following down this slow downhill path of usurpation that takes our rights away from us? I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll invite Chief Lankard back up for any comments, questions or discussion from council.
So it says five business days, correct?
Yes.
So business days obviously meaning Monday through Friday. So if something was given on a Friday, you'd have five business days.
Correct. And, and to kind of, I'll give you details on how that works so I can answer the, answer the question. So really the crux of this issue has been where should the, I guess, due process lie? Due process has always lied with courts. We have a process right now where if we, if we issue a citation for, for a violation, that can go, we can get a court date before the judge. The judge can hear the case before anything is, you know, done on that property. The judge can hear the case and make that decision on what, what, what the RFA or what the solution can be, right? So that's kind of where we wanted, what, looking at this, we had this due process set up with the zoning board of appeals, didn't think that was the right place to put it. We figured if somebody wants to appeal that process, then we will, we will issue the citation for the violation. We'll take, we'll, we'll get the court date and go to court and have that due process in the court, through the court. But this also, we want, we still wanted the abatement process in there for those situations where we don't have an owner, we can't notify an owner, we can't find an owner because it's the, the bank or a trust and the grass is two feet high and we need to abate it and put it on the tax rolls. If we don't get a response back or that they want to, you know, appeal that process, then, you know, that's why we laid this out, that we would go forward with the abatement in those situations, if that makes sense.
Keith, can you speak to the porch and, you know, the nuisances on the porch? How we would approach that, how the enforcement would occur?
So one of the things that we looked at, so this was one of the, we had a few, I guess, examples in the community that we came, came across, right? And it was more of a, I would see a hoarding situation where trash and things were piled up on the porch. It wasn't like, we didn't see a lot of these, we just noticed like one. And it's like, how do we even address this? We can't even address it because the, we don't have enough in the ordinance that would even give us any enforcement action, right? It's too vague. So that's why we looked at that to say, okay, how, how could we address these things where in extreme case that we need to address, you know, somebody has a hoarding issue and they're piling out onto their porch and it's creating a nuisance to that level. And so that's why we looked at other communities, Ann Arbor and others that had similar language. And that's kind of where we, where we drew that, drew that from.
What is the process to bring forward a concern? Is it just your own staff seeing it and addressing it? Or is there a, something in place where a community member may want to issue a complaint about a property for you to look at? How does that work?
So typically if we get a community member that, you know, makes, is that what you're talking about, like, we do have a public service assistant that does do some proactive enforcement. That's not one of the things that we're, I mean, specifically porch issues, probably not one of those things that we're looking at specifically. Those come in, you know, kind of community standards, what we're looking at normalized like grass and, and rubbish and all those types of things, but it could be. Typically, we get a complaint. If it's not proactive, it's a complaint from a citizen. We then investigate that to see if it meets, meets a violation of the ordinance. We would then give them notice, try to make contact with the owner face to face because we just find face to face communications a little better than just writing a letter and sending it off, right? So we're trying to make that face to face, you know, contact and try to get compliance. That's our number one is try to get people to comply, see what the situations are because everybody's situation, it's, it's not cookie cutter, right? So, you know, it's case by case. We try to look at these and how can we get compliance with this person? I know many times, you know, the type of a hug, I know that she's, she's, we probably shouldn't, but has, has gotten like old ladies and has worked with, with community members and done some of it herself to get compliance. Not always the best thing to do, but every situation has a different solution. So we just have to look at those and, and try to come up with the best solution. If, if, if we can't get compliance, then we provide the notice and then follow the steps. And like I said, typically, if we don't get compliance, we can, we can write a citation. There's an MCI citation that we can write with some civil infraction that just stays here in the city, which is kind of like a, like you need to get this done kind of thing, but it's just a, just a financial fee, right? And then there's a MCI violation that we can send to the court and that can further have a court date and see if we can come to, you know, have a meeting with them before the judge and give our case and get some kind of remediation or whatever the, you know, court ordered solution to it. So that's kind of the processes, but most, most of the time, like not too many times we have to write citations. It's usually just making that one-on-one, you know, contact and coming up with a solution. That's best for everybody.
So just for clarification, a citizen complaint, then just call the non-emergency number?
Call the non-emergency number, yeah. For a citizen complaint, call the non-emergency dispatch number 269-781-0911 is a non-emergency number. And just ask for an officer. You could, we also have on our website You could, we also have on our website, there's, there's also a link there that you can make, you can make a online complaint that gets emailed to our code officer as well.
I was going to mention on the website, if you go to the how do I tab, there's a line that says complaint. You click on that and it leads to a bunch of different options as far as how to submit a complaint.
Would you speak to the difference, you know, in regards to the ordinance between an aesthetic nuisance and a health, public health nuisance?
Well, it's pretty specific, like he talks about, when you look at the the ordinance itself, it talks about, and I can get into it here, but it gives the definition of a nuisance. A nuisance prohibited says, no, no owner shall commit, create, permit or maintain a nuisance. Nuisance shall be approved but not be limited to the following. So it's creation of, and it kind of lays out like what those things are. And that's what, you know, when it talks about nuisance of noxious weeds, when we, when we look at those definitions that what a nuisance is, it goes back to the other definitions that we updated to be more specific, right? We wanted to be a little bit more specific and not so broad to interpretation, if that makes sense. So like litter and junk, we added a lot of definition to what litter and junk looks like. And it's a number, I mean, it's a paragraph long, but that's what it looks like. So just to kind of clarify that a little bit more. And those are the, when it looks at, when we're talking about under this chapter, those nuisances prohibited, that's what we're talking about. It doesn't really get into, you know, the health department. And there's also another, there's other nuisances under the property maintenance code two. It talks about nuisances a little bit too. So, I mean, there's different definitions, but under this, this chapter, these specifically, this is what we're talking about. That, if that helps.
Thank you. Questions, comments or discussion?
Face to face interactions you've had so far in dealing with mowing and now possibly face to face interactions that you could have with trash and litter and things like that. Are you expecting or have you had any issues in the past with escalation between the citizen and police officers that you would be worried about by adding this to what we already have?
No, I not, no, I, I think the only time, like I said, this year, I think we've taken, we've had one court case that went to court. Where we had to take them to court to get compliance, that's, and that was a grass issue. That's the only one I can think of that we've actually had to get a judgment on from the courts. So and I don't feel, I feel like we have a pretty good, I think we have a pretty good trusting relationship with our community. We're there to try to get compliance. That's where we come out and, you know, first thing we're going to say is, hey, you know, from the police department, we noticed this violation, we're going to explain it. We're going to say, we're looking for compliance here. We're going to give you a notice, but we'll work with you. I mean, there's many cases that are stay, stay open more than the ten days. I mean, that's what's required. But there's many cases that stay because we're trying to work with the with the homeowner or the renter to try to get things fixed and up to date.
One question, just sort of curious, what happens if you run across a case where somebody is maybe, you know, their, their lawn is overgrown, they're maybe elderly and poor health. Don't have money to pay somebody else to do it, don't have kids or anything like that. What is, are we able to connect people with some kind of social services or what's the long term fix to that?
So I know we, in the past, we have been able to connect with some of the churches and and try to get the homeowner involved with the church. We can't, we don't want to, we kind of want to stay out of that mediation business. But we try to get the homeowner to contact the church. We have contacts that to try to get them the help that they need to get it fixed.
Just to be clear, the officers that are doing this, they're not like going around and like looking and I want to pick on this person kind of things. They're, they're just driving around or they heard about a complaint from, you know, the phone or anonymously. It's not like you're trying to get in everybody's business, correct?
Correct. Typically, I mean, first and foremost, we're taking those complaints and investigating them. We haven't, I will just say, we haven't been, as we haven't had the staff to do proactive enforcement. But we did add a public services assistant over the last three months, three, four months, maybe six months. And so she has started that process of of going out and just doing inspections, right? And so it's like, and we started off with grass. Well, okay, well, and and those community standard concerns that everybody has in the community that we keep hearing from people, right? So when we hear those things, we're like, okay, this is what you're going to be working on, you know, try to this section of town, go to this section of town and kind of this next week, this is what we're, we're going to identify those issues and and get some notifications out. So that, if hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, that helps. And then we also took a lot of this information. We looked at other communities and their language and things that they have. And then we martialized it, correct?
Correct, yes.
One last question for me. Just because I've seen this happen in the last few years in my own neighborhood. If this, if you think as you're getting phone calls that something is turning into more of a grudge match versus there's actually really a problem, is there a way for you guys kind of to litigate through that?
I want to say this the best way I can, politically correct. Police officers are the mediators of the world. I'm just going to say that, like I somewhat like parents and teachers with kids, we kind of have to do that with adults, right? Adults that can't figure out their problems, we kind of have to help them mitigate that. So that's kind of our role. And we are not going, if it doesn't be, if it doesn't meet the violation, it does meet the violation. And we have had situations where we have two, I mean, there's been many of these where we've had two neighbors that just don't get along. And we have to try to mediate through that. Sometimes we get our city attorney involved and say, hey, can you set something up? Maybe we need to just have a little sit down with the two owners and see if we can come up with something. But sometimes you just don't and we just have two sides that don't see any type of, are not going to give. And we just have to go with the law that we have and try to mediate and keep things, keep the peace.
Any other questions, comments or discussion? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, I would seek a motion regarding item 10A.
I move that we enact ordinance 2025 dash four, an ordinance amending City of Marshall Code of Ordinances, Chapter 92, Health and Sanitation, nuisance and publish the ordinance in full in the local newspaper.
The motion is support. Let's roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfherzberger.
Yes.
And Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That moves us to item 12A. Adjustment to E V charging rate for city owned charging stations and Christie Ring.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In 2020, the city installed six E V charging stations. Three are at the farmer's market parking lot on Green Street and the other are at the corner of Eagle and, or excuse me, Grand in Michigan. Each station has two chargers, so there's a total of 12 chargers. That was paid for by a grant through the, through Eagle, the city paid $2,000 of the $101,000 project. Included in that was five years of maintenance and that goes to ChargePoint, which does the billing and maintenance on the machines. That five year term ended in September and we received a bill for the next year, calendar year of service, and that's for $8,420. We realized that the charging stations do not produce enough revenue to cover that cost. And so we went to our rate attorney and Courtney and Associates and they did a study to see what we needed to charge to break even. And at the current rate, we were charging, we are charging a dollar per hour. No idle time. Idle time is if the vehicle is fully charged and then it just continues to sit at that charging station. And so the recommendation was to increase the rate to $2 per hour and then institute a $4 an hour idle time. And that is consistent with neighboring communities. Coldwater, for example, Western Michigan University has quite a few charging stations. And so the electric department is asking that we place this new rate for these city owned charging stations effective with this meeting. And then we will, in 2026, when we review all of our electric rates, we will make sure that we're covering our expenses for that. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you. Any questions, comments or discussion?
I have one. How long does it take a typical electric vehicle to go from empty to charged on one of these chargers? I know they, different ones charge at different rates.
Right. This is what they would consider a slow charger, so it can be, I mean, I think it would depend on the vehicle and how, if they're at what percentage of their battery they're at, but it would probably be six hours. They're, they're slow. They would be consistent with what you would have at your home, plugging into your regular outlet. So they're not a fast charger like a Tesla, for example. So we have seen that there are very consistent users of these that, for example, there's a gentleman that has reached out to me before. He works at Oplon. He plugs in his vehicle, walks to work. End of his day, he comes back and his vehicle is charged. There are people that maybe own them but don't have a good plug and so they park their car there. We have seen that that some of those cars will sit overnight, which is where the idling factor would come into play. But it really depends. So if someone's maybe visiting Marshall, they could plug in, go have dinner, lunch, shop. Three, four hours and that would get them, you know, probably at least 100 miles. Because usually, depending on the vehicle, you could get anywhere from 300 miles maybe to a full charge. You're welcome.
Does the idling rate, is that, is that around the clock or is that only for certain hours? I wonder about somebody staying overnight. If it's low charge, they plug in at 10 o'clock at night, they're probably not going to want to get up at 4 a.m. to move their car.
That, that's a very good question. The ChargePoint software is actually quite sophisticated, so we can put in there. That's something I would have to double check and get back to you on, but you can do certain rates for certain times, so I, I think we should be able to do that. The software also allows us to have like a flat, for example, $3 initial fee and then a fee, you know, the $2 per hour after that. We didn't want to do that. But I think that's something that we could probably look at. Where we're, where we're finding it more is like on a Saturday afternoon, for example, when you have people coming in and the potential is there, although I don't think we're seeing it now. But the potential could be that someone parks their vehicle there for 12 hours and someone else might want to come in and charge if the rest of the chargers were full.
Any other questions, comments or discussion?
I would just comment, I think Ryan, Ryan's point was good that we might want to just observe what the the usage is is like. And if, if a lot of people are utilizing them to park overnight and then, you know, it's done charging at midnight. Probably them, even them moving out of that spot, probably somebody else is not going to come in at 1 a.m. and swoop in there. So if it, if that is how a lot of people are using it and then that becomes a disincentive for them to use it because it no longer meets their needs, that that might not be great. So I just, maybe we should just observe that going forward and see how this impacts use.
Yeah, I was going to ask, since this is, so this is a one year contract. Do we have to renew it every year? Or are we just doing a one year contract to get us by and then review in the future for something more long term?
The contract with ChargePoint, it can, we could end it at any time. However, if we ended it, we would have no way to collect any revenue on those chargers. So in essence, we would be putting them out of service.
Right.
So that, that would, that $8,420 is an annual fee, so it'll take us September to September. They did offer a discount if we wanted to do multiple years, but with the way the city does our budgeting on an annual basis, it would be more complicated and it, and it was a very small, maybe 2% discount. So there was no savings, in my opinion, that we would want to do a multi-year contract.
Sure. Okay. So then, so then if we see there, we have that issue or people are parking or they're having an issue in a year, we could review it and say, hey, that's a, we don't want to do that.
Yes, I misunderstood your question. We can, I, you can log into the ChargePoint portal at any time and change, change the rate. However, the way the city is structured with our fees, any changes need to come to council.
Okay.
So if, for example, in a month, we get complaints, I could certainly come back to council and ask for that rate change to be made.
Really, what we're looking for tonight is just to basically stop the bleeding so that we're recovering our costs on having these in the, in the community. And then we definitely can tweak that as things go. And again, as part of the budget process, you'll see these fees in front of you again.
And there, there are charging stations at Sitco as the Tesla chargers. There's two Shell stations in town with chargers. I'm not sure who they use, if that's ChargePoint or if that's.
Not the big ones. Big ones at Shell.
But who's the, who's the company, the charging company? Not where the power is coming from, but.
They say consumers' energy on them.
They do?
Price?
Yes, I am.
Do we know the rates of those?
I do not, but those are a different level, so those would be considered a fast charger.
Faster, okay.
Correct. So you're going to pay substantially more for that because you could get a charge in an hour, a full charge or 30 minutes versus hours long. So it's not a.
Not comparable, then. That was what I was hoping to see. All right, thank you.
Just one more question, sorry. So I don't know much about these chargers. So none of them charged by the actual amount of electricity used, like gas, you pay for the amount of gas, but it's typical in this industry, you charge for the charging time, not the amount of electricity taken.
Correct. It's prorated and that's not, well, there is a, there is an option to charge by the kilowatt hour. We could, that would be an option. It's not the recommended from our rate advisors to do it that way. But yes, there is an option to do that as well.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments or discussion? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing none, I would seek a motion regarding 12A.
I move to approve resolution number 2025 dash 28, a resolution to adjust the E V charging rate for city owned charging stations and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Thank you. Motion support. Let's roll call vote, please.
Gibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfherzberger.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
And Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. Moves us to item 12B, a resolution of support for Michigan Avenue Multi-Use Path and City Manager Board.
This item is mine. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. And City Council is well aware, this year has been a year of planning. We had our master plan, we had our Parks and Rec master plan as part of that was a non-motorized plan. And one of the things that the community kept saying they'd like to see more of is connectivity pathways, sidewalks. And to that end, M dot is part of their project west of town here has incorporated a pathway essentially from West Drive west out to the major campus. Now, as you know, the intersection, trying to get a crossing at West Drive and Michigan Avenue has been a challenge for many years. And we've requested M dot do something. And as part of this project, there will be a pedestrian crossing there that's signalized. So that'd be a good thing to get folks from the north side of town to the south side of town. And again, trying to connect the city proper to the major campuses, this pathway would accomplish that. In order for us to accept that pathway, M dot requires resolutions and some certification. And that's what's with you tonight. The cost of construction is being borne as part of the project costs, however. As this pathway ages, matures and declines, there would be some type of repair and maintenance costs in the future. I will tell you from experience that the biggest detriment to pathways is, is roots. And fortunately, there's not a lot of trees that are identified to be planted close to this pathway. Trees, planting the right tree in the right place, I mean, that's really critical. And as part of this, I don't think we'll see a lot of root impacts with that, which I think would be a good thing. But again, this is a project that in order for the city to move forward with in partnership with MDOT, we need to have this resolution approved by City Council.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
So it looks like the path crosses over Michigan Ave to the south, runs west, crosses back into the median, back to the south. What's that path look like and what, what safety do we have as it runs across through the median, across the bridges?
Yeah. So again, those are going to be signalized crossovers. So that's probably about as safe as you can get for a pedestrian in order for them to actually get a signal to safely cross. And then on the northern bridge structure, there will be a pedestrian, protected pedestrian pathway that'll hang off on the south side. So the northern bridge, on the south side of the northern bridge, there will be a protected area that pedestrians can cross. And because it is that diverging diamond, MDOT tells us this is the, the pathway that is the most safest.
What's the new speed limit going to be? Is it still 45 through there?
I'm not sure what has been identified as the, the speed limit for this.
I'm looking at the westernmost portion of the, the trail there, and I'm just trying to envision. It seems like, like we, where, where does the end of that pathway go? Because it's going, if I'm understanding this correctly, it goes past Bear Creek. And are we anticipating that this is going to let pedestrians access the major campus there? Is that what, you know, because my, my, as I imagined this, I was imagining, oh, it's going to come from, come from here, take us to maybe Bear Creek and then hopefully south through Bear Creek eventually to what we hope would be a park along the, the river there. But if you can just tell me about this, this leg that would be coming toward major.
Yeah. So once you get over the bridge and they bring you south again to the south side of Michigan Avenue there, it will continue west past Bear Creek. There'll be a stub that kind of goes towards the new fire station, Marshall Township Hall, so that in the future that could continue on, which is also helpful for some of those residents that live north of there. Because right now, they currently have to try to, well, they used to have to go across that bridge abutment that, you know, was like a foot and a half wide. So that was one of the drivers on this project too. And then that'll continue and pretty much terminate where Michigan Avenue then starts going to the north. And then at that point, future construction would take you into the major campus. But again, because that's beyond the limits of the MDOT projects, that's where that would terminate at this point. That would be the current limits.
And as, hopefully, as you pointed out, you know, the, there's talk of a trailhead at Bear Creek to go down into that southern recreation area, so.
So fortunately, this will be a, a major backbone of this trail system that again is being funded by MDOT at this time. About 10 foot wide. It's about, I think, 1.3 miles long.
Is it raised or is it basically a bike path?
It's an asphalt bypass. It's.
Like linear path, like through Battle Creek, something along that line?
10 foot wide, so it's multi-use. So it's, it's one of those where you don't necessarily feel like you're going to be rubbing elbows if you're riding bike or walking kind of thing.
Will it have any kind of lane markings? Sometimes those paths do have like a line down the middle.
None are anticipated at this time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
When you say protected, is that like the metal kind of barriers you see as you're going on, you know, down a busy road, kind of those partitions? Is that, is that what you mean by protected?
Yeah. So my understanding, again, I only got one graphic, but it looks like there's going to be on the, it'll be hanging off the south side of the new bridge. There'll be a fence that doesn't allow people obviously to fall into 69, right, north-southbound traffic. And then there's a concrete barrier between where the pedestrians are and where the traveling lane of cars are.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Just one more while we're on the topic. So I, I see that we have this crossing across Michigan Ave at West Drive, which is a wonderful thing for safety that we've wanted for a long time. I'm just looking for people coming down Michigan Ave from the direction of downtown. Do we have a nice crosswalk already going across West Drive? I'm trying to envision what that looks like, if there's a nice cross.
Yes. So on, you're on the north side, there's some existing sidewalk there that then you can get across and then you'd be able to traverse to the south direction. There'll have to be some new signalization incorporated there, but that will get them there. And then the new pathway would start taking you west towards.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, is that east-west?
There is a, there is a marked controlled.
There is currently, okay.
Across West Drive, yeah.
Been by there about a million times, but I can't envision it. So, okay, good to know. Thank you.
All good. If there's no more discussion, I would seek a motion regarding I, Item 12B.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025-27, a resolution to execute Michigan Department of Transportation Form 0225A and authorize city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Support. Have a motion of support. Mr. Roll call vote, please.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
And Mayor Wolfherzberger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That moves us to Item 13A, Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board Appointment. This is a reappointment for Ian Campbell and Jane Schonmeyer. The Brooks Nature Board, I think, does a very effective job and I would recommend we keep these two members in, in their jobs. I'd seek a motion regarding 13A.
I move we approve the reappointment of Ian Campbell and Jane Schonmeyer to the Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board with terms ending on August 15th of 2028.
Support. Motion of support. So voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 13B Airport Board Appointment. Do you want to speak to this one? Theresa? No? Okay. We're, I'm, I'm recommending we keep David Mead on the airport board. And unless there's any discussion, I would seek a motion regarding 13B.
That we approve the reappointment of David Mead to the airport board with the term ending on October 1st, 2028.
Support. Motion of support. So voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to Item 13C, South Neighborhood Improvement Authority Appointment. And this is a reappointment of Lucy Howe. And I do recommend hav, having served on Lucy with another board. She, she's fantastic to work with. I highly recommend we keep her.
I move that we approve the reappointment of Lucy Hoff to the South Neighborhood Improvement Authority for terms ending on December 31st, 2029.
Support. A motion of support. So voice vote. Please say aye.
All in favor.
All in favor, please say aye. I just got a little ahead of myself. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
One more.
What?
Said we just got one more, Mayor.
It's a long, it's a long session tonight. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then 13D, Parks, Recreation, and Cemetery Advisory Board Appointment. And I am recommending we reappoint Natalie Rector. And unless there's any discussion, I would seek a motion regarding 13D.
I move that we approve the reappointment of Natalie Rector to the Parks, Recreation, Cemetery Advisory Board for term ending on July 1st, 2028.
Support.
A motion of support. So voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to Item 14, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Persons addressing City Council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Anyone wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Regis Glengler, 348 Butler Court in Marshall. Just a little supplemental, that paved trail that MDOT is putting in, that will be the obvious way for the North Country Trail and other trails to get across I-69. So they're going to come up to it, come across, come down. As I mentioned in some of my comments on the five-year plan, it would be very helpful to put a path along West Ave, south, and possibly industrial to get people off-road and connect with the river trail at that point. I know there's some plans to put, extend the river trail on the south side of the highway or the river. But then you have to build a bridge across. It might take a while to do that. So if you extended a path or sidewalk along west and industrial, I think that would help a lot for connectivity to what's there now and what will be in the future. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, I mentioned before about possibly having some kind of coffee hour, community meeting to talk with people. I don't see any progress on that. I hope that is not lost. And I think it'd be very helpful to deal, communicate more with people and discuss items that are of interest to them and could be a staff, it could be council members or whatever. So I just hope that doesn't get missed and swept away. Final thing was, like the invocation this morning, this morning, at the beginning of the meeting, talked about a fruitful discussion and I think this council in the city has missed a chance on that. The committee, which I am a part of, made a settlement offer to the city and we heard nothing back. And I think you missed a good chance for some fruitful discussion on that. Unfortunately, that means that the city's going to have to spend more taxpayer money on lawyers, which I'm sure they appreciate. And we have to get more money on donations. So unfortunately, it's going to continue. We're not going anywhere. We'll still be here. We're not going to give up. And thank you for the assistance on fundraising too. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Phil Nager again at 126 West Prospect. We are seeking answers on Prospect Street to somehow mitigate the situation we have currently with people speeding between the hospital and Kalamazoo the street and reaching speeds of 50 miles an hour on that stretch. We have a lot of people walking, animals, walking with their children, walking with, you know, up and down the street. It's a big pedestrian street and we have people that seem to want to make that S-curve coming out of the hospital. And it's a straight shot to Kalamazoo and they just gun it. And by the time they get to my house, they're doing about 50. And I think it's a public safety issue, it's probably more, should be directed to the police chief. But we're looking for answers and I've seen some possibilities that other cities do. And they also have, they have speed cameras, they have speed indicators, designators. They have, you know, people who are designated by the police department to keep an eye and the license number of those speeding up and down continually over and over again. This is not just like once in a while, it's every day. And it, it's getting pretty bad. And I think with Louisville opening up, it's probably going to get worse. So that's just my comment and I'll talk with the chief and see if he's got any ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Barry Wayne Adams, 6.2 S. Green again. I am completely supportive of what Regis and his group have done. And you guys should think deeply about rectifying this situation in a manner that the people really want to have happen. Okay, there was a, a lot of uproar I've been hearing around town about this new enforcement of the can't have a trailer or an RV in your driveway ordinance thing. People don't like it and these kind of things are, what I said before, this low path of encroachment, every little thing now has to be done by permission of the city. That's not what America is supposed to be about. The only responsibility that a citizen has is to not do things, to not commit criminal acts. Otherwise, he is free to do what he wants to do, to live his life. When the government starts making positive demands, positive performance demands on individuals, that's overstepping your boundaries. That's outside of the Constitution. You really don't have any authority to do that kind of thing. Also, why aren't you able to send utility bills in the mail? I had a problem a couple of months ago not getting utility bills and it ran into a, you know, shut-off threat. And I had to deal with Mr. Perry about it. And now it's happened again. Two months went by and only because I went down to the clerk's office and found out that two bills had been issued, but I never got them. But I, I paid it off on the 17th. However, on the 18th, you still managed to send me a shut-off notice and I got it through the mail.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Move to Item 15. Actually, before we do that, I will make one statement. City Council is never going to make statements regarding pending litigation. We have, we are represented in those cases and we will rely on our representatives to, to make any statements. With that, Council and Manager Communications, Member Skibby.
Yeah, two things. One, I'm excited for that. It gives more shuffle that we approved. It's going to be great. We're going to raise money for the Fountain Clinic. It's a great organization and funding is always tough, especially with cuts. So the more we can get out, we'll be lots of chocolate, hot chocolate, smores, chocolate fountains, bags full of chocolate candy. So if you do that, I, I would recommend you come out, enjoy your sweet tooth and raise some money for the Fountain Clinic. And then on a more business-related item, I, I've had a number and I think I've mentioned to you as well. I've had a handful of people address me about the RV concerns and questions and things. So I've tried to direct them to the city website to look at the ordinance. But I do think if we're going to be reviewing ordinances with the, the police department, I think that's what we should look at and just look at some of the standards. Just say, hey, is this practical? Is this something we want to do? So I'd recommend if we could get that into a work section and do some reviewing and see what other communities do, it'd be something worth looking at. Because there's a lot of community interest in that, especially as RVs become more popular.
Thank you. Member Gates.
Well, on the, on the theme of nonprofits and fundraising, I noticed that the United Way has their campaign running right now and they support Fountain Clinic and a number of other organizations and good causes in town. So I would just recommend anybody who's able to, to check out the United Way website and make a contribution. Help them do the good things they do in the community. That's all for me. Thank you.
Sir, Member Hackworth.
I just want to address, there seems to be a narrative going around right now that Marshall is dying. And I kind of approached this topic over the last couple of days. I've lived in this town for 38 years. It's a beautiful town to live in. It's a beautiful town to raise a family in. As I walk through the streets, I am one of the people who love to take a walk around Marshall. And I'm excited to see the bustling downtown. I'm excited to see the parking lots full. I remember in the mid-'90s and later-'90s when that wasn't the fact. And as I see our historical district just blossom, I live on a street where there's a beautiful holiday house that brings in people every night. And Holly does a great job with that. And I know Barry has actually helped her set a lot of that stuff up. But to me, as I walk through town, I see a town that's thriving. I see a town that is alive. I see a town that's not going anywhere. I see a town that's going to succeed. And I'm just thankful to be a part of this council to kind of help that go along and to create a legacy for this town.
Thank you. Member Traver.
Wasn't going to say anything, but I'll, I'll piggyback on that a little bit. Just last.
Just, um, last, last weekend, we had, um, the Frank Center had the children's theater going on. And just to see how much support the Frank Center has gotten and the children's program has gotten from families and community members, there were seventy-two kids in the production of Finding Nemo Junior. And they had a show on Thursday night, Friday night, two shows on Saturday, and a show on Sunday. I believe they were all sold out. So I just, this is an amazing thing that our small community has, to have, uh, community theater like that, that's so strongly supported. And, um, just love to see it, so, that's it.
Yes, sir. Member Chaney Huggit?
Kind of pigging backing on everybody. A couple of weeks ago, um, my granddaughter and I and my daughter were able to attend a meet, Bluey and, um, Bingo thing at the, at the Sweet Peas. And what an ingenious thing for that, for them. When I went up to the counter to pay for a couple of things, they said, you know, you're only the third person from Marshall that we've, that has actually, you know, come up with their debit card. And we, it, people were lined up down past, um, the Copper and near the, um, Marshall Hardware. So it was wonderful to see all these families, little kids, grandmas, dads, moms. It wa- it was great, so kudos to the downtown.
City Manager Perry?
Well, I'll just add that the Saturday is a pretty big event here in Marshall. That is the Children's Costume Parade. And thanks to the Fire Department who coordinates that, there'll be hundreds and hundreds of children downtown looking for some snacks, some chocolates, uh, from the merchants and everyone. And that did, again, it'll be a great, another great activity that Marshall's able to pull off every year. So again, Saturday, October twenty-fifth at eleven AM, start here at City Hall.
Thank you, sir. Clerk Quebec?
I'll be the eyeball and say, I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
So disappointing. Um, yeah, I mean, there's just, there's a ton of things going on. Uh, Skeleton Fest continues to pull in just huge crowds. Uh, I see Fridays and Saturdays just, uh, very, very busy. This coming week end, uh, is the, um, Ball at East End. Uh, we have a, um, Halloween-themed, um, trivia night at Copper. There's, uh, the Michigan, Michigan State Tailgate at Stagecoach. Um, we'll talk about that later. Um, just a, a number of events. Um, I, I, actually, uh, you're, the Frank Center Dixon's violin is coming in. Um, I actually saw a, a pretty long feature on them on a, on a news channel today. Um, so, I mean, it's just the, the number of, uh, the number of events, the number of very positive things happening in Marshall is just fantastic. So, um, we, I did have a, a Kellin County, um, Dispatch Authority meeting this week. And they are, uh, wrapping up their, um, they, they got a bond a couple of years ago for the radio upgrades, uh, throughout the county. And, um, they are wrapping up the last of that money that has to be spent by January, um, with some, um, particulars on some, um, specific equipment like throat mics for a dive team, uh, things of that nature. So they're, they're down to the nitty-gritty. But the, overall, the project of upgrading the towers and upgrading the radios, um, and, and making it, uh, just, uh, so that all of our departments, all of our, um, uh, different areas of, of law enforcement and first responders can communicate effectively, it's, it's really fantastic. So, um, with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
For? Motion support, uh, it's a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.